Okay. I'm calling the September 30th meeting of the Carver Select Board to order, 9:00 AM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who would like to do the community prayer for us this morning?
I have it here if I can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Townsend.
My pleasure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts.
It's now time for citizens' participation. Are there any citizens here this morning who would like to participate? Okay, seeing none. Our next item is to vote to approve the special town meeting warrant.
Yes.
Mr. LaFawn, would you like to start us off on this?
Yes, what you have in front of you is a warrant that has already been reviewed by Town Council. And the two challenges with this Article One, which is now in a proper form, it would seem easy enough just to revise the budget document to recognize a reduction in revenue and corresponding reductions in budget. However, because the way our Capital Projects Fund, Stabilization Fund plays into the transfer of debt from the operating budget and then effectively transfer back to the capital items, was rather confusing. So we did need Greg Corbo to help us with this. So the, what you see in front of you, Article One, does revise the budget with these, I don't know if you need me to read these lines, you can read them yourselves, but effectively reducing our community, the town-wide shared budget by about $700,000. And some of that is just a reworking of revenue sources to recognize a reduction in the tax levy and other local receipts. I don't know if you have specific questions on this. My initial thought was just to rescind the prior vote and replace it with a whole new budget. Unfortunately, or fortunately, that didn't seem to make a lot of sense in terms of opening up the entire budget document for conversation at town meeting, and that's not what we were trying to achieve. It was the same situation with the capital improvement budget, where we, again, we did move some funding that we could reduce because we're passing over the replacement of school buses, as well as the library arch renovations. Those two pieces are funds that we do not have to take from our capital stabilization fund. So that helps to offset our operating deficit. And, once again, the challenge in terms of crafting an article was to not be putting the entire menu, capital outline menu out there for reconsideration, because some of those funds have already been expended. And some of those items are actually from FY '20 and have already been in the process of being expended. So that made it a little bit of a challenge how to format this. But what you see in front of you is fairly simple in that Article One simply reduces the operating budget and the item of town-wide shared services in a fashion, you see seven points, that helps us accomplish that. If there's specific questions, I think Meg may can answer those, but I don't, completely up to you how in-depth you want to get with regard to this. But this format accomplishes a reduction of about $700,000 when all is said and done.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion in a second to open it up for discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Mr. Townsend.
Just a quick question, have these numbers been run by the Finance Committee?
They have not in this format, but a conversation with the Chairman of the Finance Committee, he is supportive of this plan. They met the other, well, they intended to meet the other evening, but they were unable to get a quorum. He has scheduled a meeting of the Finance Committee on the 15th prior to the town meeting itself.
Any other items, Mr. Bellman?
Hi, on number seven, is that figure for $6,456, is that going to cover what we have? I know the snow and ice one, we really can't gauge for next, this winter, but for everything else?
Right. Some of this is, again, a reworking of revenue sources, not actually a reduction in the budget. Meg, you want to speak to that specifically?
The outline item encompasses a bunch of different.
Meg, I'm sorry, you're going to need a microphone, if you don't mind. Folks at home can hear. And Jen is at home too, so. Jen, are you hearing all this?
I heard more than I realized why. Can I talk to you?
Are you catching all this, Jen? Jen Bogart, are you there?
I'm here. Oh, I got it loud and clear, Meg is the clearest of all.
Okay, that's good.
Because I'm sitting right next to the microphone.
Yeah, that's not going to continue.
Yeah, pull it real close, Meg. Yeah, thank you.
So that line item, that's, it says, snow and ice, transfers, it's a combination of items, but what we reduced, it's not snow and ice, we reduced transfers. Because, I mean, I could go into a more in-depth discussion of that, but it's strictly, it's strictly transfers. That was reduced.
Right. Basically substituting some funds, raising appropriate funds for other transfers, which brings, which ultimately, the way it works with our Capital Projects Fund, brings that total down. That's about, without getting too complicated, that's.
Okay, thank you.
It's maybe a little, maybe too complicated going forward, future reference, but for now, this is what we use.
Any other questions, Mr. Hoffman? No? Jen, do you have any questions on the budget?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve Article One. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Jen?
I'm going to abstain, because I wasn't involved in the general budget discussions before, so I'm going to abstain on this one, guys.
Okay. All right, so that's 401, to approve. Article Two, Mr. LaFawn has already summarized this. Do we have a motion in a second for discussion?
Motion to approve Article Two.
I was just going to add real quickly that.
Please do.
Once again, in conversation, Meg and I having met with the Chairman of the Finance Committee, this is also part of what he's going to recommend to the Finance Committee.
Okay, that's great. So you have had conversations with the Chair?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Just one question, since we're removing the two school buses, that's, we've talked to the school committee about that, and they're.
Yes, the superintendent and business manager, we have spoken to them, and they, under the circumstances, they are, I don't want to say, you know, joyous about it, but they understand that this makes it work, and right now, we're analyzing the state of the state with the school operations this year. It's so speculative at this point that they're happy just to wait on buses this year. Although next year, we're going to have to, going to have to buy the buses.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on Article Two? Seeing none. Jen, are you okay with Article Two?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Jen Bogart, aye.
Thank you, Jen.
May I just say, not to belabor this, but to Mark's point, I really want to thank the school administration and Meg and Elaine for really helping to pull this together, and obviously the Chairman of the Finance Committee to, you know, get support for this during a really uncertain time.
Yes.
That's all I have.
I echo that as well. And just to be clear, this vote is to recommend the articles. Okay. So, Article Three, Mr. LaFawn?
These are unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year. The proposal here is to move those from the Finance Committee's reserve fund. Because they're bills from a prior fiscal year, they have to require a nine-tenths vote of a town meeting. This can't just be a transfer in the current fiscal year, you know, from the reserve fund, it has to be specifically voted by the town, and.
I just wanted to throw in that the Finance Committee is aware of this, because the reserve fund belongs to them. And normally what you would do when you have reserve fund transfers, just go to the Finance Committee, but because these were prior year bills, it has to be approved at a town meeting. And it's, what is it, is it like a seven-eighths?
Nine-tenths.
Nine-tenths, yeah. So it's a supermajority, rather than just a regular majority, but I just wanted to say that the Finance Committee, they were going to take it up at that last meeting, but they did not have a quorum. So, but the Chair does support it.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion, we approve Article Three. Second.
Motion in a second has been made. Any further discussion? All in favor of recommending?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Jen Bogart votes aye?
Jen Bogart, aye.
Very good. Article Three is passed. Article Four?
Article Four, because Meg is here, I will defer to her in entirety.
Okay.
Give me a reminder, oh, that's the elementary school.
Yeah, I could do it, but I don't want you to feel like your time is invaluable here, that's all.
So, yeah, going back in time, I think everyone is aware that the police station, that we did not, the first article that ever came up on the police station, it did state that there was a certain sum of money that was borrowed for the police station, but that any additional funds would have to be funded from available. No additional borrowing, it would have to be from available funds. So, the elementary school is complete, and we have a balance of $422,000 in there, and according to master general law, that can only be applied, it can't be closed out and moved to the general fund, it can only be applied to another capital project with the same or longer lifespan. And so that, the police station needs the funds, it's sitting in the elementary school, this article is to transfer the funds to the police station.
Is there a motion in a second for discussion?
Motion to approve Article Four. Second.
Any discussion, questions?
I have one.
Mr. Bellman?
Is the fields all set over there? I know we're having problems with the fields not being ready. Did that get signed off by the, by the school? Anyone know?
I'm not sure that.
I know it.
That's been, I don't know, Bob. We have to check on that, but that's not part of this financing.
Okay, any further discussion on this article?
I got a question, when you guys will let me jump in.
Mrs. Bogart, please.
I heard Meg say that this extra money can't go into the general fund, but can it reduce the debt on the project, and can the money somehow get back to the taxpayers? Because the taxpayers voted to fund the school with a Prop. 2 and 1/2, and in my mind, if this money just gets transferred to the police station, that's kind of Prop. 2 and 1/2 money being used on that project. So, I'd like to see any extra money go back to the taxpayers, or reduce anything that the taxpayers have to pay over the life of the bond.
Well, actually, Jen, if I may, we did not vote a Prop. 2 and 1/2, we voted a debt exclusion. And, Meg, you finish off.
So there are two pieces, so the Department of Revenue agrees with that position that, you know, that it's unfair to the taxpayer to have a debt exclusion, to have your taxes increased due to the debt related to this project. So, they have stipulations, and the two stipulations is that the premium on the bond, as well as the balance, has to go into an account, or a sum of money has to go into what's called a fund balance reserved for debt exclusion, and that will be used to offset the amount that is raised directly through the tax levy. So there is a relief to residents because of this, and the Department of Revenue is very specific about that, that there needs to be relief to the taxpayers for that purpose. We can use the remaining funds for the police station, but there, but it's, without getting into complicated accounting, there is relief for the taxpayer for that reason, if that makes sense.
Mrs. Bogart?
Okay, I just, I understand it would go to be used to another capital project, and I know that money has to come from somewhere, but in my opinion, I'd like to see this go like directly back to the taxpayers, instead of just being transferred from one account to another. That's all.
If I could just add that.
Yes, please do.
Although, you know, I completely appreciate Jen's comments, the reality is, is that the police station project needs additional funding. That funding's going to have to come out of somewhere. And at the moment, the only other resource available would be the capital stabilization fund. So realistically, it's really more of a shell game. It's not necessarily, it's not really a situation where you're really providing much relief anyway, because you're only talking about a one-year reduction in people's taxes, you know, throughout the levy. It's not, this isn't a permanent savings of any kind, so transferring this to the purposes of helping to complete the police station project is a better option, in my opinion. And how much, how much funding, Meg, beyond this, does it take to complete the police project, estimate it right now? Do you have that?
I mean, whatever, right now, whatever balance is currently in the police station, plus this $422 is what will finish the police station.
But over and above the $422, I didn't know if you, I know you speak to Bill Harriman on a fairly regular basis about the state of the state of financing here, so, I didn't know if you had that handy, I know I didn't ask you to bring that, so I.
No.
I'm on the spot, but just.
I mean, there's a balance of about $5 million left in that Capital Projects Fund, which right now is not enough to complete all of the items that are necessary, that four, because Bill had been running with a budget for quite a while, and there was discussion a while back about closing out that elementary school project to the police station, so that was built into their budget. They have been making all decisions based on having the sum of money.
Okay, available for the project.
Available for, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bellman?
Since this discussion got into this, so, I remember for the police station, that they had a number of other items over and above the building of the police station, buying furniture, computers, and other stuff for upgrades in there, for the police station. Is this money over and above all those other monies that they've asked for, or is this included in those figures?
Bill has one master budget, and it includes the computers, the furniture, all of that. And that budget that he's running with includes the $422.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? I believe there's been a motion in a second. And no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
Okay. So it's 410, to recommend. Article Five, this is an article to amend the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District agreement as approved by the, by the District. Before we get into this, well, we can have a motion in a second if you want, for discussion, but we.
I make a motion, we approve. Second.
Okay. Mr. LaFawn, we have a couple of guests here who are.
We do, and I had a nice chat with Mr. Carrati, Tom Carrati, yesterday, and rather than me to try to recount that, I did send the board a memo last night. Most of that was recounting some of the facts that Mr. Carrati had passed on to me, but Mr. Carrati is certainly much more qualified to discuss what this article means and what it doesn't mean.
Good.
You should recognize.
Yeah, Mr. Carrati, would you like to come up in front of the microphone? And you are the attorney for the District. Thank you.
So this.
Would you bring the mic real close?
So this, this article, the agreement that the District put together, this in, in 1973, the District was formed by the three towns. They established a charter agreement that sets up the District. And I think you're probably all relatively familiar with the history, since then, the District went into an agreement with CMAS to use the Carver landfill for ash disposal from the CMAS plant. That agreement with CMAS runs to December, the end of December this year. One of the aspects of that agreement with CMAS is the existence of the Rochester Transfer Station, which services the three towns, although primarily Wareham, and then Carver, and I think minimally Marion. As the CMAS agreement winds down, obviously the three towns face the question of what to do in the future with regard to waste disposal. There's a discrepancy or, you know, falling out, I guess if you want to call it that, between the towns. Marion took the position a couple of years ago, or maybe a year and a half, that they did not want to be involved in, in the District as a waste disposal entity. They wanted to go on their own. There is a transfer station in the town of Marion that, as of December, is going to be, going to go back to Marion. Marion owns, Marion has the underlying ownership of that, it used to be the Marion Town Dump, and so that will revert back to Marion. Marion wants to use that as their transfer station. So they took the position that either the District should stop being involved in waste disposal, or Marion wants to withdraw from the District if the District wants to continue with waste disposal. That was the, the starting point for the agreement that you have in front of you on the, and proposed to be on the warrant. There are two ways that we can satisfy this dispute basically with regard to Marion's wishes to get out of the, get the District or get itself out of the District as a waste disposal entity. One is for Marion to withdraw. In the 1973 agreement, there is a provision that any of the towns can withdraw from the District, and the mechanism for doing that is for that town to vote a town meeting that they want to withdraw, notify the District that the town wants to withdraw. The District would then set up an amendment to the charter agreement of 1973, basically allowing that town to withdraw. And then that amendment goes back to that withdrawing town for a second vote to accept that amendment. That's one mechanism for Marion to withdraw, leaving Carver and Wareham to decide how they want to operate the District. The discussions among the District, once Marion notified the District that it wanted to withdraw, the District Commission started discussing this and looking at alternative ways to satisfy the situation. Part of that is that even if the District were to go out of the waste disposal business, there are other liabilities, obligations, and rights that the District has that are ongoing. One clear one is the landfill. The District is the operator of the landfill, the licensed operator. DEP will look to the District to be responsible for what happens over the immediate future, and the immediate future generally with regard to DEP means about 30 years post-closure. So for a period of about 30 years, DEP is going to want that landfill monitored, tested, reported to DEP to make sure there's nothing wrong with the closure, and there's nothing leeching out of the landfill. That's one obligation the District is going to continue to have going forward. The District has an agreement in place with CMAS that a trust fund that CMAS created will continue to pay for insurance for the District for a 30-year period, which actually started in 2015, so it's going to continue for another 25 years. This fund will be available to buy insurance for the District to cover any environmental liabilities at the Carver landfill. So that's an ongoing right that the District has to continue to maintain that insurance, and as long as the District is an entity, is insured under that insurance provision. And I think the third major one, and Jeff Osuch can, can speak to anything I'm missing here, but a third major obligation that the District has is pension liability for former employees. They're in the Plymouth County retirement system. It's estimated that between the direct pension liability and benefits for retirees, the liability, Jeff, about $550,000 total?
Mr. Osuch, would you like to come join us? Jeff Osuch is the Executive Director of the Disposal District. And maybe you guys could share the mic?
You have to wear your mask.
Yeah, but you'll have to wear your mask.
I think, you know what, I would be happy to cede my seat so Mr. Osuch can be.
Okay, that would.
Are you sure? Okay.
Whatever works. But you will have to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
As Mr. Carrati indicated, one of the liabilities the District has is for former employees who have retired, and for current employees, is one of the two people that are working at Benson Brook is qualified for retirement benefits if and when he decides to retire. We had discussions with Plymouth County Retirement, the estimated cost to the District, and Plymouth County is willing to take a lump sum settlement at the end of this year, sometime in January, they'll do an update. But the number right now appears to be about $396,000 and change for health insurance. And then on top of that, which the auditing firm that we've hired is going to give us a final estimated number, is obviously OPEB and health benefits for those employees. That's probably going to be somewhere between $150,000, possibly closer to $200,000, based on actuarial numbers as to how long people may live. So there's about a round figure of $550,000, maybe as high as $600,000 liability that the District has. The health liability issue is going to have to be an ongoing payment probably to the company that is providing that coverage at the present time, most of them that are retired or on Medicare. So those costs would continue on, and someone's going to have to pay those bills as we go forward. But the pension, we're hoping that Plymouth County will accept the lump sum when they meet in December, which they've indicated to us that they would.
So, getting back to my narrative, not to drown you in a lot of numbers that you have to figure out because you don't really. The point of all that is that the District has ongoing liabilities and rights. The District can't just disappear. The alternative, or let me put it this way, for the District to go out of business totally and simply stop being an existing entity would require a special legislation from the, from the State House, and that's highly unlikely to happen, if for no other reason than, first of all, it's very complicated, because whatever special legislation dissolves the District would involve all three towns, and the towns would inherit those obligations and rights. And secondly, DEP is going to continue to look to the District to be its primary obligor on the licensing of the landfill. The DEP is highly unlikely to want to see the state legislature let the District go away. So, my take on that is, that's highly unlikely to happen. So, the District would continue to exist no matter what. The only issue between the three towns is, what is the District going to do besides these obligations and rights that I've talked about, the landfill, insurance, pension liability, and the ownership of the Rochester Transfer Station? And primarily with the Rochester Transfer Station, the question is, is the District going to continue to operate that transfer station? Or is it an asset that the District will dispose of? Sell it, transfer it to one of the member towns, or sell it on the market? So, what the District Committee came up with was the agreement, the amendment to the charter agreement that you have to be proposed to go on your warrant, and that is this, that the District will continue to exist, it will pay its pension obligations, it will make sure that it continues to have that insurance coverage, it will continue to be obligated for the landfill, it will stop operating the Rochester Transfer Station, and it will convey the Rochester Transfer Station, primarily, or I should say, the first option would be to go to a member town, but if not, then sell it on the open market. That was agreed to by the District as being the proposal, it would go back to the three towns. And what that does is, all three towns stay in the District. Each town decides what it wants to do in terms of waste disposal. It leaves the towns open, any one of the towns could purchase the Rochester Transfer Station, or strike some other kind of deal with the District to obtain it and to operate it. One possibility, if Wareham and Carver wanted to continue to operate it, they could do it by intermunicipal agreement. It would be outside of the District, would have nothing to do with Marion, and it would be Carver and Wareham deciding how to operate it, without having any input from Marion. So, that's the proposal that you have, and that, I basically call it a caretaker agreement, the District being a caretaker, shutting down its business operations, going off into the future, and at some point frankly withering away, because once the landfill is stable and DEP is satisfied with it, we don't have insurance, we don't have landfill liability, the pensions are all paid off, at that point. At that point, years from now, when we're not around, somebody's going to, on behalf of the district, go to the legislature and say, would you pass a law disbanding the district? And at that point, it'll be simple. So that's one alternative. Marion has accepted that caretaker status agreement. You have it proposed to be on your warrant. Wareham does not have it on their upcoming warrant. So it's starting to look like there's a strong likelihood that Wareham will not accept this agreement. And if it's not accepted by any one of the towns, then it just fails. So the fallback on that is the district has also entered an agreement or proposed an agreement with Marion to allow Marion to withdraw. That withdrawal basically says Carver and Wareham will continue to be the district, Marion will withdraw, Marion accepts its ongoing liability as a former member of the district for the landfill, as well as for anything that exists today at the Rochester Transfer Station. Marion will take the Benson Brook Transfer Station back. It will keep, I think it's two pieces of equipment, I believe it is, at Benson Brook. Marion releases the district from any liability for what it's, what's out there at Benson Brook, so the district's wiping its hands clean of anything at the Benson Brook Transfer Station. And, and Marion is giving up any claim to any funds that the district has, any assets. If the district sold off the Rochester Transfer Station, Marion says, we don't want any money for that. We just want to break clean and go on our own. So that's the alternative. As I was talking to Rich yesterday, it looks like that's probably what's inevitable, because if Wareham doesn't agree to what's on your warrant, then there's no, there's no alternative except the withdrawal from, by Marion. And I anticipate that Marion will go along with that withdrawal agreement. So that's basically where we are. If, if you don't vote on this, if your town meeting rejects this amendment to the charter agreement, then same as Wareham, it fails. And Marion withdraws under the withdrawal agreement. That's the alternative.
Okay.
Clear as mud?
Yeah, clear as mud. So would you mind putting yourself out there and the two of you, tell us what you recommend the town, town of Carver do?
It's, it, it strongly depends on whether Wareham and Carver are able to move forward to decide what to do with the Rochester Transfer Station, because the, right now, the majority vote in the district is not to operate that transfer station. And in fact, the, the amendment, if you, if you accept it, locks in that the three-member district with Marion involved will not operate a transfer station. And so that's locked into that. That becomes the charter agreement. So that cannot be changed if the, if Marion, if, I'm sorry, if Carver and Wareham delegates decide that we would rather go back to operating a transfer station, that would actually have to go back to all the town meetings to be approved, because this charter amendment says we will not operate a transfer station. So if, it's the, it's the best solution going forward in terms of those liabilities and obligations I talked about, because it keeps all three towns unified. It probably is, means that Carver and Wareham, with regard to what's going to happen with that transfer station, have to make that decision on their own. But that also might be an easier decision to make without Marion being involved. So, so I guess I would say that from the district's point of view, I would rather see the district stay whole with all three member towns. From Carver and Wareham's point of view, and I, I can't really advise you, I don't know if you've looked at it otherwise or had your attorneys look at it, but from Carver and Wareham's point of view, it may make sense to let, let Marion withdraw from the district. And then those two towns would then be in charge of what happens with the district. Again, you still have to work out an agreement with the two, with the other town. You know, Wareham and Carver really have to figure this out. And that's, I think that's, that's what really drives what you do starting in January. It's really not terribly, it's almost a toss-up, which whether you accept this agreement or let Marion just withdraw and have a two-town district is really almost a toss-up from your point of view. The more important thing is for Carver and Wareham to figure out what they want to do starting in January. And don't be driven by these agreements, be driven by the need to make that decision.
So this, this article would allow Marion to withdraw, but it also takes away our ability to use the transfer station? No? Okay, can you?
If, if the article is passed, then, and Wareham passes it, then the agreement is that you will not be operating a transfer station.
Okay.
But all three towns would remain as members of the district.
Okay.
Right.
Items that Mr. Crotty mentioned regarding liabilities to the landfill and so forth, all of those items would still exist in all three towns would have, the current board is made up of three representatives per community, so if this article passes, as it has already passed at the Marion Town Meeting back in June, and it's passed by Carver and Wareham, then each town still has three representatives on the committee. Each town would make decisions going forward as to any pension or other issues, liabilities, the landfill primarily, into the future. And at some point, as Mr. Crotty indicated, whatever assets remain at the end, be it you sell off the transfer station, if neither town of Carver or Wareham want to take it over, the equipment and so forth, those assets would revert back, or the money from those assets would revert back to the respective towns that remain. So if it was a three-town board at that point, in the article, you'll see the formula and so forth, how assets would be distributed if and when, you know, 10 years from now, five years from now, 20 years from now, that decision was made to discontinue the district. So the two separate issues, and I think you have to be careful, because the perception is if you vote this, Marion is out. Marion is only going to get out of the district if this article fails.
Okay.
At Carver's town meeting or at Wareham's town meeting. And the article is written by, it says that each town, our decision would have to be made by December 31st of 2020. So yes, at the moment, Wareham, for whatever their reasons are, I don't know, because initially we were led to believe they're holding a town meeting, I believe it's October 26th, and this article is going to appear. And at the last board meeting last week, we were informed by the representative from Wareham that they were not placing it on their warrant, but they would maybe consider it at another special later in the year. Well, the calendar is getting very short for December 31st.
Mr. Crotty?
And with regard to which, which is more advantageous for the towns, it really, to be really clear about the transfer station, which I think is the primary issue in terms of what you want to do going forward. Carver and Wareham will always have the opportunity to operate that transfer station. If, if you accept this agreement, and Wareham accepts it, because both, both towns have to accept it, Marion already has, so it's a three-town amendment agreement. If all three towns accept it, the district would dispose of the transfer station and probably end up selling it to Wareham or Carver or both under an intermunicipal agreement. And then, and, and from our point of view, the district point of view, it's preferable for the district to stay whole with three members and dispose of the transfer station. And that's simply because it makes all of the, the relationship between the three towns easier to deal with, and makes the insurance coverage easier to deal with. And it's, it keeps the district unified.
So is that a recommendation for this article?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, is that a recommendation for, in favor of this article?
So, so the district would say, we're in favor of this article. That doesn't, and as I say, from Carver's point of view, that doesn't stop Carver from having access to the, to the Rochester Transfer Station. It simply means the district won't be operating it. It would be operated by, obviously, whoever, whoever purchases it from the district. That may be Carver, it may be Wareham, it may be both working together. Or if Carver and Wareham decide they don't have any interest in the transfer station, the district will sell it to some stranger. Either way, it just simply won't be the district operating it. Maybe one benefit to buying it out from the district is that you have total control of the transfer station as opposed to dealing with, you know, three, two other towns. But that's a decision that, you know, the towns would make independently, because the district would no longer be involved in that transfer station. So the district would prefer to stay unified and dispose of the transfer station. And when I say the district, that's not unanimous, there are members on the district panel who would say, no, we don't like that idea. But the majority support that. If Marion withdraws, leaving only Carver and Wareham as the district, then those two towns, again, using the district as a mechanism, could operate the Rochester Transfer Station. And it's not a lot different than striking an intermunicipal agreement between the two. So again, you're not losing the opportunity to use the transfer station, and again, you're doing it in partnership with Wareham. So the transfer station doesn't go away, the option is there, it's an opportunity no matter which way you go on this. So our, our request is, would be that you approve this amendment to the charter agreement. That's primarily as a benefit to the district, because in terms of Carver and in terms of Wareham, you still have the ability to run that transfer station, operate it, do whatever you want to do with it. Either way, either way, that's always going to be there.
But, I'm sorry, but the informational summary we have here says that the proposed amendment would also memorialize the terms that the district has voted on to close the facilities at the end of 2020?
Correct. The district would not operate that transfer station. We would convey it to Wareham or Carver, or a partnership between the two, or if those two towns were not interested, the district would convey it to some stranger. It only means the district won't operate it. It doesn't mean that it's not available.
Okay.
It only means the district is not, is not going to run it.
Mr. Hoffman?
Quick question. So if nothing happens, if, say, Carver did, we did vote on and approved it, but Wareham didn't have it at their special town meeting, what happens next?
If that happens, then...
All three had to approve, correct?
Sure. If that happens, then the amendment with Marion, for Marion to withdraw, would go to their town meeting. And I'm assuming that they will accept that, because that's what they've already expressed as, as their intention of withdrawal. So they would withdraw, and there would be two members of the district, Carver and Wareham. Now, the district had previously voted to close the Rochester Transfer Station. The new, the newly formed district of just two towns, Carver and Wareham, could simply vote to not close the Rochester Transfer Station, in which case the district would run the transfer station. The, the biggest problem with that, frankly, is so far, that soon-to-be newly formed district has not really made any plans for that Rochester Transfer Station. It has no employees, it'll have some old equipment that CMAS leaves there on site, it will have no plan for its operating period, you know, times, no plan for how it's going to allow people in and out, whether it's going to track, keep track of who's coming and going, whether there are going to be stickers. None of this is set up yet, and it's about three months away. You know, January 1 is the date that, right now, CMAS runs that transfer station. So there, and CMAS is in charge of everything that happens over there. On January 1, CMAS is not going to be there anymore. And that's when, if, and it looks like the district will still be, will still own it. It looks like the district at that point may probably most likely be Carver and Wareham, not Marion. And so the district would have authority to run that transfer station, but there are no plans at this point. And that's something that Carver and Wareham particularly, Marion doesn't care anymore. Either way, Marion's not going to be involved in that transfer station. So Carver and Wareham really need to look seriously about what's going to happen three months from now, and get their, you know, work with Jeff Osuch. It looks like that's inevitable, that this is where, this is what you're going to have, is two towns with a transfer station. But no plan to put that into effect. So, and it's got nothing, very little to do with these agreements, except that we know one way or the other, CMAS is not going to be running it, Marion's not going to be involved, and if Carver and Wareham want that transfer station to be operating, they need to start making plans right away and not let time pass. The next meeting of the district is the end of October, so there's another month gone right there. So I think the towns really need to get together and start working on that and figuring out what's best for the two towns in terms of that transfer station. And this is totally unrelated to what you're going to be voting on in, on a warrant. That's something that you need to be working on separately from the town meeting and separately from these articles. You need to start focusing on that.
Mr. Hoffman?
So those same concerns you just expressed, if, as far as Carver, if the district stayed open and Carver and Marion running that, say these, this amendment passed and then Wareham passed that, those same concerns would be had for the new company running the transfer station, correct?
Right, exactly. The same, you would have the same concerns about operating it. In other words, you know, equipping it, personnel, hours of operation, all that stuff, all those same concerns, but, you know, you could, you would add to that, I suppose, that you, Carver and Wareham would have to strike a deal with the district to acquire that transfer station.
Which adds even more, less of a timeframe.
Complexity, correct.
Because I think that was, sorry.
That's right.
I think that's a question I've been getting asked a lot by people. There's really two issues, the district and the transfer station are two separate issues. That, you know, the, whether the district stays, well, the district will stay open because of the, like you said, the liabilities and the insurance and that type of thing.
Right.
It's a question of whether the three, three-member, three-town member district or a two-town. It looks as though Marion is leaving the district, so the future district after January 1st will be Carver and Wareham, correct?
That's, that's almost certainly a likelihood, because Wareham is not even, doesn't even have this on their warrant. And if they don't vote it, then it's a done deal, basically.
And the second issue is the transfer station, which Bob has been updating us on. So it's, I think a lot of people are combining the two, and it is too separate.
Right.
They just want to make sure of people that are watching and listening to that.
Right.
Right. The, the issue with the transfer station, you could almost separate it out. One is operational, and one is the legal existence of it in terms of, is it the district? Is it the, is it the towns? That's separate, you know, the lawyers can draw that up and figure it out. The operating part of it is something that has to be started right away. You know, I mean, in a, in a, on a tight schedule, you can figure out a deal with the district in terms of operating the, the transfer station, you know, the legal work, the paperwork. That could probably be done pretty quickly. The more difficult thing is figuring out your operations, and that's something that I think needs to be focused on.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Belbin?
So I could have just said, let's not put this on the article, on the town meeting, and, and that would be my thing. I've had, put all your options out there, this was supposed to be put out there before. It didn't, we didn't have a town meeting, so we waylaid this till now. It gave an opportunity for Wareham and Carver to talk about a possible transfer station and how it would work, and we're still in discussions with that, with Rick, with them. So I just want to let you know that it's not just this agreement here. Thank you very much, Attorney Crotty, for this, bringing them up to speed and everything, and Rick for printing out that nice little diagram of information of what's going on to the board. But this is a financial decision, too, you have to look at. With Marion, if you approve this at town meeting and Wareham doesn't, it's a moot point. It's useless. Okay, Marion, Wareham doesn't even have it on the town meeting. All right? But you look at a financial end, with Marion leaving, they had 20% interest in the district. They're walking away with two pieces of equipment and the Benson Brook, which is theirs anyways. If the district folds, they keep their Benson Brook anyways, no matter what. Excuse me. So Carver, right away, at a minimum, will get 10% interest in all assets, a minimum. And that's how we negotiate a new agreement between Carver and Wareham as being the, the district. And that's how we negotiate a new agreement between Carver and Wareham as being the district, because that will have to happen, we'll have to get a new agreement with us two towns here, all right, with the future liabilities of Marion being part of that agreement in there, too, just to cover ourselves as a district. But no matter what, we could have up to a 20% increase, a 50-50 split of all the assets. So, this is a financial decision, too, because instead of, if Marion stays in and we split everything, Marion gets 20%, we get 30%, and Wareham gets 50%. Think about that. So, this is a financial decision now. With Marion leaving, they go to town meeting, they vote, they vote their way and get out of the district. Great. We just increased funds coming to us. If the district doesn't survive and we have to split our assets, we're getting more money in our pockets. It's going to come back to us in some way, shape, or form. So, look at it that way also. The other thing is, I want to bring up is, as Attorney Carradi said, is that the decision was not unanimous of the district to approve this agreement. With the district, it was a 5-4 vote, if I remember correctly. It was three Marion and two Carver representatives that voted in favor of this. So, the three from Wareham and I voted against it. So, just to keep that in mind of how we go forward with the district, so. But that's really it. I mean, it's up to this board to decide if we're going to go forward and, and keep this on the article and let the town people vote on this. But if, if Wareham doesn't have another town meeting before January 1, it's a moot point if Carver does it.
Mr. Hoffman?
So, if, if we keep this on the town meeting and then it gets voted, it gets approved, won't that give you and the other two members of the district the sense of what the town wants to do?
Yeah, it could. It could.
I mean, because, and again, I don't know if it's, if we should talk to the other two members, you know, I know you said that you voted against it and the other two members voted-
Right.
-for it. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or place to ask why.
Right.
They each voted.
They can come up and-
And I'm not trying to pick on anybody, I just want to find out more because I'm trying to get caught up to speed on this. And, and I know, in a perfect world, the three members should all vote together unanimously for the town. But again, everybody has their own mind and reasons and things like that. But again, my whole thing, and maybe I'm wrong, if the town votes in favor of this, that we're telling you, Bill, and John, we're done, we don't want to continue. And that's how we hope that you would vote in the district meeting.
And part of this agreement says that there will not be a transfer station at Route 28.
Correct.
So, I mean, in your case, yes, it is to say, "Okay, fine, we vote this in, it does give us an opportunity to say, 'All right, fine, if this is the way the town meeting wants, they don't want a transfer station,' and they vote this in, it is, it is a direction that the district can go."
And if that happens, such as what Attorney Carradi had said, correct or am I wrong, if that's, the transfer station by the district is, is through and no longer operates, but Carver and Wareham can come to an agreement after the fact to maybe run it, either Wareham runs it, we help them, you know, whatever. This, by approving this and voting against it at the district meeting, that won't stop that, correct? That down the line, Wareham and Carver could approach, approach the district by the land or, I'm sorry, the transfer station?
Well, that would, it would be the two towns, so it'd be up to one of the towns to come forward. I know Carver doesn't have enough money to purchase that property. And I'm thinking, my assessment of the property is somewhere around $500,000, because there's 10 acres of land there, but not all of the 10 acres is usable. So, it, it could, I think, what was it, 550? I think we came up with a, an appraised value of it for it, but I don't see, I see it closer to $500,000 for that. And I don't know if Wareham is interested in purchasing that at that amount or a delay. I mean, between the two towns, we can talk about how things are done, and the district will have to do that, because the district is a separate entity and it's six members, so. But yeah, and I'd be happy if the chairman allows the other two members to come forward and talk about this.
Certainly, yes, certainly. First, Mr. Osuch.
To try to answer Mr. Hoffman's question, the intent was to say that all of the assets that remain, the property for Route 28, the other equipment that's at Benson Brook and at Route 28, solvent appraise, appraisal for the land, appraisal for the equipment, everyone knows what the property and the land is worth. Each town was asked if they had an interest in any of it. Wareham has expressed in an email from their town administrator that they had an interest in the land and they had an interest in remaining equipment. So, but one of the discussions has been that if the district, no, no town at the beginning would require to come up with the money to pay for the land. It's only if the, say, Wareham and Carver, the only remaining towns, if it's a point, those two towns decide. I'm, I'm working with the assumption right now that Marion is going to get out. Wareham gets, excuse me, Marion gets out, they get two pieces of equipment, that was part of the deal, they don't get any cash, it's in the bank, they don't benefit if property is sold and so forth. Then the two towns would work their own agreement as to how they would share the revenue from the sale of the land or the equipment. It could be 50-50, it could be 40-60, it could be whatever is negotiated. But you could operate the transfer station. No one is going to immediately have to go to a town meeting and say, "I need, use, Mr. Belbin's configured 550,000 to buy the property before we can even start." So, you could actually operate the transfer station if there's an intermunicipal agreement between Carver and Wareham, or one town or the other solo, with the understanding that the other town, you're putting that like, as a IOU, at some point, you would have to owe the other town a portion of it. So, if it was a 50-50 split and the land was 550,000, each town is on the hook for roughly 275,000. So, that's a discussion that would have to be taken between the two communities, assuming Wareham is operating. Excuse me.
Marion.
Assuming Marion's on it.
Mr. Carter and Mr. Duggan, would you like to add your two cents?
Sure.
Good, good luck finding a mic.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank, thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Stay close. Thank you for the opportunity.
Certainly.
I think we've kind of, kind of beat the death with regards to, we know what happens should this, this warrant article be voted upon and Carver approves it and Wareham approves it, the district no longer is operational and it just maintains its future liabilities. As I think Attorney Carradi stated, with, if, if no one votes on it, Marion will leave, and then you've got a two-town agreement, there'll be another vote. If they fall along the same lines as the past votes, then we'll be operating a district. One thing you need to look at from a standpoint of, as Bob mentioned, the financial component of it, yes, with Marion out, there'll be additional, I guess, assets to negotiate over. But we also haven't looked at is what happens day one. How do we run this station? With Benson Brook closed, an additional volume going over to Route 28, we've got equipment that is so old that, that, who knows if it can handle the volume? It needs, it needs new compactors. I would suggest you get a new scale so that you can actually weigh every piece of product that comes in there. So, in the future, you're not trying to do an allocation between Carver and Wareham, you know exactly how much tonnage is going in by each member, by each person using it. You've got operational issues, obviously, to deal with. And I think, does everyone have the schedule that the district looked at back in July of 2019 with various options? Just to give you some color commentary on that, and Jeff, feel free to chime in if I'm getting this incorrect. Back in July of 19, I think we, being the district, had security at both sites, and we were basically checking every single sticker that came onboard. So, it was done manually with, with boards and, and people making, making sure that no one got in without a sticker. At that particular point in time, that number of 4,600 stickers was put together on a schedule saying, "This is what we think we know is the usage of the district." Using that number, I think that we came up with a $250 sticker fee to cover all the costs, both operational and disposal. Now, the big concern there was, this is a big increase to taxpayers, and what happens should people say, "I'm not going to pay it." And that's when you see that schedule that starts to reduce, say, it's a 10% reduction the next year, 20% reduction the next year, it's a spiraling effect. That means that costs are going to go up and the sticker price is going to go up. The last column shows that, you know, what happens if the towns decide, because the towns set the fees, let's just say they used 125, then you're operating at a negative deficit. Now, when I first got onto the district, there was a rapid mismanagement of funds. Everyone knows what happened with the prior district members. We had no money in the bank, the towns were getting assessed through the leadership of the committee, we're now presenting three towns with 1.2 million maybe in the bank at the end of 2020. To do with what you like, should you turn around and operate and you don't pay off pensions, and you decide to run it with the members and maybe add staff, whatever, whatever's agreed upon by the district to run the place, you could very easily reduce that deficit. You could operate for one or two years, I think Bob was talking about a two-year test run. Not sure what you'll have in the kitty when all's said and done. I'm not sure if it was meant in this, in this meeting, but should the district still be in effect, we can bond money, we can go out and get loans, and we can buy, we can buy the compactors, we can go out and buy trucks, we can go out and buy all the equipment that we need. That doesn't go away in two years if you turn around and say, "I'm no longer a district." So, whatever's left now has to be paid for. So, there could be an additional assessment to the towns two years from now, should you decide that this wasn't worth doing, it wasn't, wasn't worth continuing the district. So, I think that, Bill, feel free to, you know, come over if I'm missing something, but I'm thinking that, that for me, I would like to know what the townspeople think. And, and Bob had mentioned way back when, he'd like to know what the townspeople think about, about the district, should we open it, should we close it? So, if anything, this would give us some guidance with regards to what the town thinks, even though it might be a moot point, should Wareham turn around, decide not to pursue it.
Okay. Any, any further comments, questions?
Did you want to say anything, Bill?
Mr. Duggan?
Okay.
Please don't say. Mr. Belbin?
A resident actually came up to me and said, she doesn't know what she's going to do with, oh, the transfer station, because she goes there every week and on a very fixed income, she doesn't have an extra $500 to spend for a trash hauler. And I turned around and she said, she used to work for the health department, and she says, "If I file a complaint with the health department that this not having a transfer station is a health and safety risk to the town, would that help?" And I turned around and says, "I have no clue about that." But I did talk to somebody about this and they kind of said, "Eh, maybe an issue." So, I just put that other caveat out there.
Any further comments? Mr. Duggan?
Can I comment?
Yeah, yes, Mrs. Bogart, can you, yeah, go, you go ahead and then we'll hear from Mr. Duggan.
Okay. I think basically, in my opinion, it's premature. We don't know what it would cost to continue running the district with the two towns. There's, you know, speculation sticker fees and stuff, but we don't know. So, I don't know why we would vote to end, and running the transfer station as a district and then be forced to pursue a municipal agreement with Wareham until we know that continuing the transfer station as is, is too expensive and not going to work. It seems pretty simple. Why, why vote to end something when you don't know what it would cost and if it would be too expensive? That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Mr. Duggan, you're going to need a microphone, sir. No, the people at home can't hear you without a microphone. I, I know you've got good projection, but.
I mean, obviously, the, the whole, this whole situation is, is extremely complicated. And, I mean, I've been on the district as long as John, and it's, it's just hard to comprehend a lot of this stuff. My whole thing in, is that the taxpayers shouldn't be left on the hook for things that we don't know. And the whole thing, in my mind, the whole thing should be a private, you know, privately run. And, and if I had the money, you know, I'd do it to keep it open. I go to the transfer station all the time. I don't particularly want to get a hauler, but if that's, you know, the case, or I think when Michael was here, we talked about something, some deal with Plymouth, I don't know whether Marion, I think I heard that Marion won't take stuff from, out of town, but, I mean, I'd go to Marion to do it. But I just don't think that there's so many unknowns, and I think Jen just brought it up, that, that the taxpayers will end up, you know, on the hook for this, if there's, that's just where my mind goes, you know? Trying to keep it as simple as possible and not have the taxpayers on the hook.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Duggan. Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
I just had a question, kind of follow-up to what Jen had said. If we don't close the district, and, and enter that intermunicipal, municipal agreement, but if we don't close the district, on January 1, the transfer station is still running and now?
No. Come Jan, come, right now, no matter what happens, there is no plan to operate the transfer station after December 31st. And it's not because of the legal provisions, it's because we simply don't have a structural plan. We don't have employees, we don't have equipment, and all the rules of operating and so on. There is nothing in place to run that transfer station. And that's, really doesn't have much to do with these agreements as much as, you know, I don't want to go over the whole history, but a year ago, Carver was pretty strongly in favor of getting out of the waste business and wanted the district to just become a caretaker. That seems to be evolving to some extent. Wareham was always willing to talk about that, but never committed one way or another to whether it wanted to be out of the waste business and let their residents be on their own, or whether the, the town slash district was going to still be involved in, in the waste business. So, so the way this agreement that you have on your warrant or proposed for the warrant, the way that evolved was basically, the majority seemed to be of the three towns, the movement seemed to be toward the district withering away, becoming a caretaker and eventually disappearing 30 years from now and getting out of the garbage business. That seemed to be the momentum. And that was pushed to some extent by Marion saying, "We want to withdraw." Carver seemed to be going in the same direction, Wareham a little bit wishy-washy about that, but willing to go along. That now seems to be evolving to where Wareham is saying, "Maybe we really want that transfer station." Some folks in Carver may be saying the same thing. If everybody was, had the positions they had today, I think this amendment might look different. So, this is an amendment that was put together at the beginning of the year, there seems to be some movement otherwise to want to keep that transfer station running, possibly through the district. So, let me, from the district's point of view, I think it's better if all three towns stay together, but that's only for some very technical reasons, as an example. The withdrawal of Marion, Marion has agreed that even if they withdraw, they're still willing to be liable for the district's obligations. But what that means is, where the district can assess the member towns directly for its obligations, you'd have to send a bill to Marion and say, "Please pay this." And if Marion said, "No, we don't feel like we should pay it, or maybe we can wiggle out of it somehow," then you have to file suit. So, Marion becomes a separate entity, different from the other three, the other two members. From the district's point of view, as an, as a governmental entity, that's not a convenient way to operate. But maybe that would never happen. So, and, you know, it may not be something to really have to worry about. So, from Carver and Wareham's point of view, to be honest, it may make sense for those two towns to say, "Let Marion go and let, and we'll figure out the transfer station on our own." That may make sense. And in addition to that, even if, even if you, Carver and Wareham, a year from now, or two years from now, Marion's gone- or two years from now, Marion's gone, gone its own way, Carver and Wareham are the only two members of the district. Two years from now, Carver and Wareham could say, "You know what? Let's get out of the garbage business. Let's go, let's go back to that caretaker agreement." And Carver and Wareham can revisit this two or three years from now. It doesn't matter. Or anytime. You can always revisit this aspect. The one thing, and the, my takeaway is kind of separate from your warrant, honestly, and I don't mean to take up your time off, off warrant, so to speak, but the pitch I need, I want to make is that you really, your representatives, whether it's the selectman, whether it's town administrator, however you want to do it, get together with Wareham and figure out what you want to do with the transfer station. Figure out what equipment you need. Just to put that plan together so that January 1st, or as soon as possible after that, there's something in place to get that moving. Because if, if the two towns really want that transfer station to be there, you've got to get a plan in place for that. And the district will cooperate with that. Whatever the, whatever the towns want to do, work with the district, get it done, but don't let it sit. Got to get it done. And so, so that's my take on it. It's not the end of the world. First of all, it's not likely Wareham's going to vote on this and approve it. It's not the end of things. If you don't vote on it, you can revisit it years from now and Marion won't be part of that process. Uh, so, you know, it's not a finite decision to make. But to the extent that average citizens who aren't listening here today can at town meeting pick up on all this and figure out the nuances, maybe you want to have them at least have a discussion on it at town meeting. But beyond that, the most important thing is the transfer station and putting an operating plan together.
Okay. Any, any further discussion, Mr. Belbin?
One last thing, actually, two. Carver and Wareham have been having discussions about how to, um, transfer for, to run a transfer station. We have had those discussions. Um, one of the stumbling points is the, um, vote that the board took to not keep the transfer station open. That has to be rescinded first. And it has to be rescinded for a couple of reasons. The first one is it allows new discussion on utilizing the Route 28 station by the district. The second one is to utilize our executive, all right, to help us along that way of keeping the transfer station open. It, it would be unethical to turn around and have him working, uh, against what the board has already decided. Okay? That's why one of the things I said, put this in the warrant. Uh, the second thing is, um, about bonding of money. This new agreement here under section, um, seven, incurring debt, that allows the district to incur debt and to bond money out too. All right? So whether it's a district that's running a transfer station, or it goes to this quote skeleton district here, still allows them to go ahead and bond money out. And why would they bond money out? Well, if there was a, um, uh, the tran, the landfill, if something happened to the landfill and there was an exposure, well, the district has to pay $100,000, if I'm correct, all right, as a deductible. Okay? If the district doesn't have $100,000, they're going to turn around and they're either going to go to the town, say, "Give us money, split it up between the three towns," or they're going to turn around and bond the money out and then send the town a bill for 20, 30 years or whatever. And then another spill happens, because it's each occurrence, there's another $100,000 that the towns will have to come up with, or the district will have to come up with and have to be given out to the towns to do, uh, all three of them. So, um, the whole thing about bonding here is kind of a, it can happen either way, no matter which way we go, but it's still bonding money has to go back to town meeting to be approved. So it's not like the district is just going to say, "Hey, I'm going to go out and get a bond for the money." Well, if we are, then the district has to go ahead and go back to all the towns and say, "Hey, we need to bond money. We need your approval to bond money." Is that correct? Right?
Oh, you, yeah, for the, uh, for the bonding, you're right. Uh, just one, one minor correction. $100,000, actually, CMAS is obligated to cover that. But you're right that if CMAS was, had gone bankrupt or something, then the district would not have recourse to CMAS and would have to come up with the $100,000 itself. If there was a spill or a leak at the land.
Within that, within that 30 years.
Right.
Of that money. After that 30 years, anything happens after that, it's on the hook for all of us.
Right.
Mr. Osatch.
As you've heard, you've got articles and you also have an article, an article number six here to withdraw from the district, which I'm assuming you'll be taking up in a.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I said, I'm looking at your warrant here and I noticed that Article Six, the article that follows this article that we're discussing, is a proposal to withdraw from the district, avoiding the articles in talking to the question of the operation of the transfer station after January 1st. CMAS has been operating Route 28 since 1998, so for the last 22 years, they've been operating it. They use their own employees, they use their own equipment, they pay all the bills, they get rid of all the trash at CMAS, they get rid of the recyclables, the cardboard and wherever at other outlets. You have paid nothing for the operation of Route 28 and most of the costs for the Benson Brook facility has been reimbursed by CMAT, plus all the trash costs for the three towns and the two transfer stations. It's cost the taxpayers in those three communities nothing. You've had free trash disposal. As of December 31st, that ends. There is no contract in place, be it for the district, to my knowledge, for Carver or Wareham, to take any of the trash to CMAS at this moment. Marion has signed a contract for CMAS and I will tell you, the year of one cost per ton is roughly $79 a ton. So even if the district exists on January 1st, we don't have a place to take the trash because we don't even have a contract for disposable trash, never mind the other issues about employees, equipment and so forth. And I'm telling you, that's 90 days from now. And the next board meeting isn't until the 28th of October. So in essence, that's 60 days from now. No matter what decisions they make on October 28th, which would follow your town meeting and Wareham's town meeting, because I think they're the 26th. Marion's town meeting, which I'm assuming they scheduled to see what happened between Carver and Wareham regarding what is known as Article Five on your warrant, is, I believe, November 9th or that week. And that is when they would place their article to withdraw the second time. They did it previously and they have to do it after to withdraw from the district. And that would be effective the 31st of December. So the difficulty you've got is they're still a valid board member until the 31st of December. Wareham isn't till the 31st of December to decide if they want to pass Article Five or not. It appears right now by not putting it on the warrant that their intention is, is not to take it up, not precluding them from having a special first week of December hypothetically. But the bottom line still remains, no matter who votes on what, come January 1st, you do not have a place to get rid of your trash and you're not going to be able to operate that facility at Route 28. So the residents of Wareham and the residents of Carver, at this moment, have no place to take anything as of January 1st. Benson Brook reverts back to Marion. Marion, I understand, is going to operate their facility for their residents approximately two days a week. Right now, there's approximately 1,300 vehicles a week going to Benson Brook that are primarily residents of the town of Wareham and a few residents from Carver. I can't give you accurate numbers at Route 28, but I can tell you that the volume of trash that goes to CMAS from Route 28 is much higher than what goes from, from Benson Brook on a monthly basis. So can visualize having to move 1,300 vehicles that have been using Benson Brook over to Route 28 in addition to the homeowners that frequent that. And Marion does not frequent Route 28. They're less than 1%. So that's where you are right now. And the problem I see in general terms is Wareham and Carver either get together, work out something, or basically be prepared on January 2nd to tell your residents, "We have no place to take your trash."
Okay. Mr. Huffman?
Quick question, I promise, my last. Uh, Bob, you said that you're working with Wareham on, you know, trying to work something out. Is it just you working with one person from Wareham? The guys are crunching the numbers?
It's me, one of their selectmen, their town administrator and our town administrator. That's who we're discussing it with.
Okay. Is there any reason why the district members aren't all? I know before you had mentioned something about a quorum. Is there any reason why all six members?
That's, part of the issue is that if you have all six members, that's a quorum of the board. And we have to be careful with that, so.
You can't make it an official meeting when you do that?
Well, we are not a chairman. We would have to turn around and go to the chairman and say, "Hey, we want a separate meeting to do this." And that's where part of the issue comes into play of that, we can't utilize the executive to work for a vote that was passed before. That's contrary to what's going on. So the way that we have to do this right now is between Carver and Wareham to have discussions, okay, so we don't meet that quorum, all right? And then we can turn around and hopefully come back to the board here and the taxpayers say, "All right, this is what we've come up with."
So whatever you decide that, you and the, those people just discussed, before anything can be done, does that have to get brought before us?
Oh, most definitely. My, and I thought, I thought in this, there was going to be, in this warrant, that there was going to be another vote to, to see if we want to have a single trash hauler, but it's not in here. I'm kind of concerned about that. Because I like all the options that we put out there to everyone to say, "Hey, these are our options here." Because, I mean, if the town of Carver and Wareham don't come to an agreement, that means our residents that utilize Route 28 and the very small people that go a couple a week, I think it's under 14, that go to Marion, all right, will have to turn around and have alternate plans. So, and I know talking to the haulers and listening to what they had to say is that in order to get a trash hauling system, could be up to six months to actually implement it out, out there. So we don't have six months. So, I mean, like I said, and, and Jeff is right, because we have to tell our taxpayers to say, "Hey, residents, find your own trash hauler because we're not going to have the transfer station and we're not going to have town-wide trash pickup." So it's, you're on the hook, go find your own person, it's on you. And that's it. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Mrs. Bogart?
Uh, yeah. I, nothing is stopping anyone from getting their own private hauler today, tomorrow, December, the longer this goes on, if, if the plans aren't in place for January 1st. But keeping the district together at least tells people, "We're still trying to work on it." You can go get your own hauler, but at least we're trying to come up with a plan, even if it's not ready January 1st. Because if, if it doesn't work, then everybody will have to get one or come up with something. But I just think keeping the district together before we have all the information seems, seems like a reasonable thing to do. I don't, you know? Because nothing is stopping anyone from getting their own private hauler at any time.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Mr. Lofan?
Couple of points, couple of points, and I think Jen, you're right on, right on the mark there in terms of, you know, it's not like people won't have anything to do with their rubbish, January 1st. The other point I would actually ask a question of, of Mr. Carrati. The district itself, at some point, could indeed run a transfer station. There's nothing that precludes the remaining towns in the district, Wareham and Carver, to decide that they wish to run a transfer station. Is that correct? There may be some mechanical issues involved. It, it's not like Wareham and Carver have to do so outside of the district.
No, no. If, if what looks inevitable happens, which is that we're not going to get all three towns to agree on this amendment to the charter agreement, if that, if that happens, then you're going to have a district of Carver and Wareham. And at any point now, you, the district voted, voted last year to, to close the Rochester Transfer Station, but at any point now going forward, the district can reverse that vote. I don't anticipate, because Marion knows that it's going to be, that it's going to withdraw from the district. So I don't anticipate that Marion representatives will have any problem allowing Carver and Ware, you know, voting along with Carver and Wareham to operate that transfer station. I don't think you're going to, you, you'll probably get those three votes because what do they care? As of January 1st, they're not involved anymore. So they'll vote to, to decide to change that decision and go along with the district as of January 1st and they're not a member anymore. Go ahead and operate Rochester, it's fine with us. We don't care anymore. So I think that's also inevitable, that you will be able to run the Rochester Transfer Station. That vote will be changed and it will be in, it will be able to be operated. I, I kind of disagree with Bob that I don't think, right now, there's no real reason why, given that the facts on the ground, it looked clearly that Carver and Wareham are going to need to run a transfer station or have some other options, that those discussions can't take place right now, that if Carver and Wareham have people meeting, get Jeff Osatch at those meetings too, get to work on the district, because it's going to be the district that's going to be doing that. If it's Carver and Wareham, uh, two members of this district and they're, they're the only two members, it is the district that's going to have to operate that transfer station. It is the district that is going to probably end up having a contract with CMAS to take waste. So start those discussions right now. You don't have to wait till October, till the end of October at the next district meeting to get authority to do that. I think you should start doing that right now. Get those things in place.
No, thank, thank you, because I think that it's been a little confusing as to the role of, the possible role of a district versus, you know, we talk about Carver and Wareham like being on their own. Well, um, under certain circumstances, that may be the case, because I know some of the conversations we've had with Wareham, some of the logistics of either one town being the lead community or some sort of, um, um, assessment between the towns and, you know, kind of see what happens. Those, those don't seem like good options. I know Wareham's not interested in being a lead community. They have discussed it. So I, the, the consensus among those who have been discussing this is that the best way to do this would be to continue it through the district if possible. So, so there's nothing that prevents that other than, um, and a, a, a different vote of the existing.
Sure. Just a vote at the next district meeting and I don't see any way that that vote would lose.
Okay. And realistically, there have been a, a lot of conversations, and I see even from what Mr. Carter presented from their discussions in 2019, there have been a lot of discussions about, um, you know, the various cost structures, whether it's stickers, um, you know, more or less a pay, pay-as-you-go type of system. So I, I think there's a, there's some, um, there's a, there's a pretty good idea of what it's going to cost to run a facility, uh, but it's, again, it's based upon assumptions that, you know, may, may or may not, um, you know, come true. So, um, so again, I, I think it's possible, I think the, the broader point is, is whether or not, and I, you know, the, each town, it's important enough to have a transfer station. I, I think ultimately, there's a policy decision there that needs to be made. And I don't know that Wareham or Carver has individually made that decision as to whether or not this is important enough to them. I, I think that is, I think that has to be done in some fashion or at some point.
Correct. The towns really have to commit to what, what they want to have happen. And if it is the transfer station, they say, "Time is running out."
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Very quickly, Madam Chairman. Um, I just think it's important that all three of our representatives are involved in the discussion going forward to try to find a solution to this problem. And I, I would urge that any ongoing meetings we have with Wareham include all three of our representatives, not just one. And it's up to Wareham whether they include all three of theirs or not, but I think all three of our representatives should be included. And quite frankly, I'd like to see this as an official meeting, because I'd like to see the minutes of the meeting. And there are no minutes when we have these, uh, non, non-official discussions, so just my thoughts.
Okay. If there's no further discussion on this article, I'd like to have two votes. One is to just putting this article on the special town meeting warrant and then we can vote to recommend it. Is that okay? So I'll entertain a motion to put this on the special town meeting warrant.
Make that motion. Second.
Okay. And this is Article Five. Any further discussion? Please say no. [laughing]. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
No, this is just to put the article on the warrant, Jen, not recommending it?
I understand.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. So, it's four to one to put the article on the warrant. I'll entertain a motion to recommend the article. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on recommending the article? Seeing none. All in favor of recommending the article?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
Okay. So, that's two to three to recommend. Okay. Thanks very much. Article 6, do we?
I would maybe ask Mr. Carter and Osich, stay for this Article 2, because there's some technical pieces here that.
Okay. So, this Article 6 is an Article 2. And I just, if I could interrupt for one second, I know there are people here for Article 7. We won't be long. It's right after this one. Article 6 is an article to authorize the Select Board to begin negotiations to withdraw from or dissolve the Regional Refuge Disposal District. Is there a motion and a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to recommend. Mr. Belbin.
All right. So, this second article was here in case the first one fails at town meeting, that this would back up to do the same thing that Marion is doing or has done. This is the first start to get out of the district. That's why Article 6 is in here. So, if, right now, we really can't dissolve the district, all right? That first one was to go ahead, Article 5 was to go ahead and go to a quote skeleton district. If that one failed, this one would come up, where Carver would withdraw from the district. We already know that we really can't dissolve the district, because we still have liabilities and everything else. I don't think that this article here is useful, because if we vote on this, then we have to have another town meeting, because we have to negotiate like the district did with Marion. Marion voted for this, all right? Then they came back later on and agreed to negotiate with the district to get out of the district. So, this is the first step in getting out of the district. Okay? We would still have to go to another town meeting and vote on whatever conditions to get out of the district. I think this is premature. I don't think we really need this article here anymore. And that's it.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you. Mr. Lefan, you may.
Marion is leaving the district. There's no question about that. Marion just has to take one more vote and they are gone, correct?
Right.
But presuming that that happens, there's two towns left in the district. And I think we discussed on the phone yesterday, and I think you mentioned it a little bit earlier, you know, it's a two-town district. What happens, you know, if Carver or Wareham wish to get out of the district? Can that even be done mechanically in light of Marion withdrawing? I think it's a technical question that I think is confusing to me.
And the answer is, God knows. Because the.
That's pretty helpful.
Unlike, yeah, it is. There are some statutes that create districts, and they have built into that statute provisions for disbanding the district. This, the statute that creates regional refuse districts does not have that. So, we're in a situation where if we were reduced to a one-town district, or tried to reduce to a one-town district, you would almost, I would envision you inevitably have to go to the legislature and some kind of relief to either allow that in some fashion. Well, you'd really be dissolving the district as a whole, because the district contemplates multiple members. And so, you'd really need to go to the legislature at that point for some kind of relief. I just don't see how you could put together an agreement with a district that doesn't exist anymore. But it would just, it'd be a god-awful mess, as Bob. That's the way to put it.
Well, that kinda brings me to the point as to Marion is all but gone. They will be leaving. What value does an article have that would then, either Wareham or Carver seeking to negotiate to get out of the district? Again, mechanically, is, can that happen? I think the question is.
Right.
The answer is, I don't know. So, is it of any value for either Wareham or Carver to be seeking to negotiate out of a district?
Other than to, other than to authorize the district to try to dissolve.
Right.
But, again, you're going to the legislature to see what happens. It'd be a huge mess. And inevitably, you'd still be addressing the same question, which is, what do we do about our waste? You know? The, I think the biggest downside for the town of Carver, for my, you know, if I, if I were asked that question, what's the downside for us? I think the downside is that if Carver actually were able to withdraw from the district, first of all, you'd be on your own in terms of what are you doing about waste disposal. But secondly, if your recourse was to deal with the, was to use the Rochester Transfer Station, you'd be negotiating from a weak position, because you would no longer be a member of the district. You'd no longer have control of the transfer station. You'd no longer have half the votes on the district commission. And you'd be going to the, to the town of Wareham, which is then the district as well, saying, can we participate too? And they're gonna tell you what the rules are.
So, I have a question. I'm not sure who to address this to, but the informational summary is very confusing, because it says this article protects the town of Carver, should Marion or Wareham vote to reject the previous article. How does this protect us? Or should we, do we need to revise the informational summary?
And I don't know who drafted. I know, I think it was cut and paste that Elaine did from the prior warrant that worked.
Right. So, I think this probably needs to be revised.
I don't know who prepared the informational summary.
Yeah, I don't either.
I assume it may, might.
It was not the former board. I know that.
If I may, under the current circumstances, I think it actually is detrimental to Carver.
Okay.
Frankly.
Thank you. Thank you for your honesty.
Potentially, it could potentially relieve you of the obligation to be a member of the district. But other than that, it's all downside, from my point of view.
Thank you. So, maybe we should amend the informational summary before it goes on the warrant. Is there any further discussion here?
I have a question.
Certainly.
The previous article, we took two votes, one to put it on the warrant. Can we do the same for this?
Absolutely. That's my intent. Yep.
I thought we made a motion to.
We didn't.
That's why I.
We made a motion. We haven't voted.
Correct.
Okay. So, let's amend that motion. I apologize. Let's amend that motion. Let's have two votes here. One is to put it on the town meeting warrant, and the next would be to recommend. So, if we could amend, whoever made the motion?
I don't remember who, but I'll make that.
So, this is just to put it on the warrant?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. And, okay. So, all in favor of putting Article 6 on the special town meeting warrant? Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
Okay. So, that's, that fails. Okay. That's it.
It thinks one thing's all.
It does. All right.
Yeah, the informational summary is no longer.
Yeah, we don't need that at all.
Elaine is quite relieved.
Okay. I wanna thank both of you gentlemen. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Do you have some special to put on your warrant? The idea.
I'm sorry. Can you speak into the mic?
I was saying that on your agenda, that I saw online, you had a discussion, I believe at, well, I think it's at 9:30, which obviously is a long time ago. Is that, do we need to be here for that, or?
I think just you, if you wanna stay for a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
We'll breeze through this.
Would that be all right with you, Mr. Osich?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you both very much.
And thank you, Mr. Carter and Mr. Duggan. Appreciate your input. Okay. Moving along to Article 7, to transfer tax title parcels to Conservation Commission with deed restrictions. This article, we discussed this at our last meeting, and actually, the way, I think that, the way that is phrased is backwards, because what we're doing, first, we're putting a deed restriction on, which is the conservation restriction with Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game, and then it'll be transferred to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. And that's apparently very important for fish and game. They want, in order for it to be protected under Article 97, which is an amendment to the state constitution, it has to have the deed restriction put on it first, and then given care and custody to the Conservation Commission. So, it may seem like semantics, but it's actually very important. So, this article, we did discuss in some detail at our last meeting. I know we had the wonderful Ms. Pierce from Fish and Game here. Has she left?
Yeah, she had to leave.
Okay. Mrs. Layton, would you like to join us up here?
Take a vote, Chris.
We can. We certainly can. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Motion to.
Excuse me?
Motion to recommend.
Yeah, it's a motion to recommend. Right. Sorry.
Well, we thank you.
Mrs. Layton.
And we had to shoo away all of our residents in droves, as we did in December. But we're working cooperatively with the Fish and Game. And as I told you, the land is being, has, or maybe is already surveyed by Mr. Board. And collectively, we'll be meeting again, along with Joan, with the, excuse me, the Conservation Commission. That's the first Wednesday in October, I believe.
October 7th. Mm-hmm.
And going forth with that, to educate them, to bring them up to where we are and so forth. We thank the Board for their diligence. Sarah, as well. I hope you got all the pictures you wanted. I think I sent you about 30 more pictures.
I did. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Rick also for working very closely with us to kinda help us understand what we had to do and so forth and so on. So, I guess we're on our way. This is gonna be a plus for Windham Shores, for all of us to enjoy. I know personally, when my grandchildren come in the wintertime, we slide down there. If you saw the pictures, it's rather steep.
Yeah.
But it's great sliding. You just have to make sure, as a parent, you're first, and you have to be at the edge so they don't go on the pond. Of course, they don't care. But as far as fishing, I just wanna say I was there again, taking pictures. And there was a, a young gentleman came in with his canoe. And I chit-chatted with him a little bit, and I said to him, do you like fishing here? Oh, man, ma'am, it's great. This is really a great pond, just the right size. And so, we chit-chatted, and come to find out, he lived here. I've been in the residence for 47 years. And he, as a young fellow, grew up, and my children played with him. And I, I just couldn't believe it. But he said to me, he takes care of this area. He wants it to be as pristine as it can, doesn't want trash and all that other stuff. And I realized that other people are gonna come fishing, and that's fine. And we've had some trouble, and all those people need to know that they need to have a fishing license. They're all welcome to fish. And again, I guess I'm getting too winded, but nonetheless, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Layton. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of Article 7?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart, aye. Jen Bogart, aye.
Okay. That's two votes for Jen. Thank you all. I'm gonna entertain a motion to have a quick recess, five-minute break.
So, moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting of the Carver Select Board. Our next item is an appointment to Old Colony Elder Services for Connie Kelly.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. I know Connie is now our new Director of the Council on Aging. We welcome her. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Oh, and Jen, Elaine, Jen had to leave the meeting. I don't know if you got that.
Okay, and I'm sorry, that was.
Yes, Mr. Lefan.
Motion by Bob, second by Mark.
Yes.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is approval of the 2021 seasonal population estimate for ABCC.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And that population estimate is 11,509, for those who would like to know that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. The next item, discussion and possible vote on Select Board policies. I know that this is a really important item, and we've been trying to get to it for a while. We're down one board member. Mark has to leave soon for his business. And I'm wondering if the Board would be willing to take these policies and send in all your comments, your edits, your X's, X-outs, to the Town Administrator's Office, so that we can take it up in a really serious, pick apart way at our October 6 meeting? Just my suggestion, if there's a motion.
I would make a motion to table this until a future meeting.
I'd like, I'd like to get it on the October 6 agenda, though. Yeah. I mean, because we really have been putting it off. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of tabling?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Discussion.
This is one of the things that I, I kinda pushed, and I'm still pushing. And it's all about, in my opinion, right now, taking back the position of the Board of Selectmen from what was done in the past. And what rights that we have as Board of Selectmen members, dealing with policies, procedures, and guidelines or whatnot, we have. And one of the other, one of the ones in here that is very important is the personnel code. And I think this really is something that I wanted to discuss today, is the personnel code on top of the other ones. But that personnel code, we're the ones in charge of it. We are the ones in charge of it. If somebody wants to bring up changes or issues of policies, all right, they come to us, all right? We discuss it, and then the Town Administrator and the Human Resources Officer, they're the ones that are gonna implement it. Okay? And I have to say, there was a recent change in the personnel code that I don't think that we approved at our Board of Selectmen meeting. So, that needs to get put on the next agenda.
Okay. But, you know, Bob, I hate to say it, but the personnel code, well, it's not on the agenda, because it's not, it's not actually called a policy. So, I think maybe we have to bring that up at the October 6 meeting.
Can I just, real quick?
Yes, Mr. Lefan. Yes, Mr. Lafon?
Can I get just from Elaine here, the change that Bob referenced actually wasn't a policy change, it was a change to an example, so that somebody could better understand the policy that was already in place.
Okay, so, but again...
That's what Bob's referring to, but again, we can discuss that at...
Yeah, I just, I hesitate to discuss the personnel code here since it's not actually on the agenda.
Understood.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to take these board policies and send in our individual recommendations, edits, slash and burn, whatever we have to say, to the Town Administrator's Office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's four zero, passes unanimously, thank you all. Update from Mr. Belbin and Mr. Lafon on the town of Marion's withdrawal from the Regional Refuge Disposal District, and on all other solid waste slash recycling options, including the transfer station. Who wants to go first?
I don't think there's anything from the last meeting that we had, excuse me, that I updated the board with. We haven't had a meeting between Carver and Wareham. We're actually going to have one today, if I remember correctly, but we're here instead. So we have to have one, which goes to the fact that me wanting to protect Jeff, having Attorney Carty say that we can't have discussions with Jeff present, and to move forward with possible a transfer station, it's my, my intention that if, if this goes forward with the board, to keep Route 28 open, that we keep Jeff on. He's very experienced, very knowledgeable, to help with the transfer of the transfer station, running of it. Transfer of the, yeah, all right, is that right?
Yeah.
But that's the goal, and I was kind of hoping the other members would, would stay for this part of the discussion, too, so, but they're not here. So, that's it, I mean, unless, if it has anything else...
I mean, we've already presented you with results of an RFP, I know that that's a, something that, you know, if the board felt that the results of that, or the information was, was worth putting in front of the public, that's a decision you would make, and I would certainly appreciate if that's something you don't feel is appropriate for this town. I'm just commenting on this to, really to illustrate that that, that work was done, and information, that research was done. And to the extent that that's the end of it, that's certainly fine, certainly fine with me, and I'm sure many other people. The other thing is that obviously, we're going to have to get, continue to meet sooner rather than later with Jeff, and certainly invite all of the other members of the representatives to participate if they're able to. And whether, like you said, whatever Wareham chooses to do is up to Wareham, but to the extent that there may be quorums, we'll certainly have to post those, so that's all I have there, on top of what Bob said.
Mr. Belbin?
Is there a reason why the hauler wasn't put on the warrant, to put it forth to the voters to see if they're really interested in this or not, or...
Well, that's, again, that's, it's up to the board, it's your warrant. If you'd like to us to put on a warrant, an article there, giving people the opportunity to vote on a curbside, town-wide curbside program, we'll certainly do it, but like I said, that's really a matter of what you feel is appropriate for Carver. I don't have a, I don't have a stake in this, so if you don't feel that's something that the town is prepared for, or it's in the town's best interest at this time, that's, that's your decision, not mine, so...
I mean, I'd like to see that on the warrant, so that the voters at town meeting can turn around and have a discussion, and let them know this is possibilities of what's out there, not just, you can pick your own one, but this is another option the town has available to them.
Okay, so is that a motion to have a warrant article on the special town meeting for what precisely?
I'll make a motion for a special town meeting warrant article, to have the RFPs discussed and voted on if they want to go for it or not, leave it up to the voters, so they have all the options.
Okay. Is there a second on that? I'll second it, so we can actually take a vote. Any other, any other discussion?
Was this on, this was what was on the town meeting last year, correct?
No, no, I don't...
No, it's, it's slightly different, Mr. Lafon?
The, what was on, as I understand it, last year was authorization to research the possibility of a preferred hauler, which is a different than a curbside, you know, town-wide program where the town chooses one hauler, and it's essentially mandatory, everybody participates in it, and there's some sort of assessment for each individual household like a utility would be.
So what makes that different from...
Preferred hauler is the town would go out and do a procurement for a hauler who, at presumably a reduced rate, that residents would have the, would be able to afford themselves of that procured rate, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't preclude you from still continuing to deal with any other provider you want by, by, by subscription.
So what you're...
Curbside program is, you know, similar to more urban areas, but like Marion's doing, they did an RFP for trash haulers, and that's, it's mandatory. If waste management is the, is the bidder you choose, Waste Management picks up, you know, every home in the town.
So that last one that you talk about is a town-wide?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the one that the town meeting voted?
And the preferred hauler program was what the town voted not to research, so that's a different program than the RFP that we put out this year for, for people's information.
Okay, so...
Two different...
I'd like to be really clear, so what is the article that Bob is proposing we have? Is it for town-wide or for preferred hauler?
For a town-wide, based on the results of the RFP that we did in conjunction with Wareham. That's what, I believe, Bob, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what you're...
And that's...
Yeah, I want...
That would be mandatory?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, right.
Okay, yes, Mr. Belbin?
And I want to make sure that the public understands what the bids were for each one of the three haulers, not just the low man on the ball, but to turn around, know what Republic and Waste Management and ABC put in there. I kind of also want to see if we can put a new RFP out, so we can include the other trash haulers in the town, so I don't know how we do that, if I make a, amend my motion.
Well, everyone had, everyone had the chance to submit proposals, so it was an open process, it wasn't, we didn't solicit, we didn't, you know, from specific companies, those, you know, everybody had, it was advertised, you know, pursuant to the law. I'm, I, I find it hard to believe that every hauler in the region wasn't aware of it. But again, it's whatever, whatever the board chooses to do is...
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend? What is the deadline to put things on the special town meeting?
Today.
Today?
Yes.
So, the issue I have is, there's nothing on our agenda...
That's true.
About putting this on the town meeting warrant. There's nothing on the special town meeting warrant, there's nothing on the agenda about taking this up, so I don't know how we can vote to put this on the town meeting warrant.
Actually, you have a very good point, Mr. Townsend, yep. I'll take back my second.
I'll take back my motion.
It's done, okay. Now, is that it for the update to the, to the district? Mr. Lafon?
Yes, yes, other than what I said, we'll try to, as we go forward, we'll try to get more membership involved in deliberations.
Mr. Belbin?
Just the last thing here, again, I just want to make sure that the quorum issue is that we have a chairman for the district, and he's in charge of that, and if we have three members up from Carver, and the other three from Wareham want to be a part of it too, and one of them is a expert in trash hauling and the trash landfill business or whatnot, so we will have to post all the meetings and whatnot, and usually, we switch back and forth from Carver to Wareham, Carver to Wareham for that, so that'll be another level of pain, but I just want to let you guys know that we need to know beforehand if they're going to show up or not, so we have our quorum. I mean, like I said, they didn't stay for this discussion, so I can't talk for them.
Mr. Townsend?
Again, just, I think it's important that those meetings are posted, so that the public can attend, and so that we can review the minutes of what, what goes on, and I think it's important that all three Carver representatives are involved, so, just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you.
Town Administrator update, the CARES Act funding?
Very brief. The county has requested that we provide two, two numbers to them, one is the amount that we expect to be procuring or committed to prior to October 30, and the other piece is what we expect to be procuring between October 30 and December 31. We've submitted those numbers, approximately 775,000 prior to the end of October, and just about 741,000 from October to December, so we're, we're up to date on giving them their information. They, what they're trying to do is to determine what, what funds may be available for redistribution to other, other communities who have needs beyond their earmark, so needless to say, we, we have enough needs to, you know, to add up to that. So the only other thing I'll add right now is, we did have a submission that went in last week, we're waiting to put together a very large one, which includes about $500,000 in school, return to school, PPE cleaners, furniture, to help, you know, deal with the social distancing requirements. One issue that has come up, we do have a, an amount on here that we currently, and what we'd hope to do over the, in, going forward, is recover unemployment costs. There's been a lot of fraud, and throughout, not just the county, but throughout the state, in terms of fraudulent claims, people using other people's names to try and, you know, get on board. There really isn't a good solution to that yet, so that's unfortunately, we may not be able, seeking to recover as much as we had hoped, simply because we don't want to find out later on down the line that some of our submissions are being rejected because they're, they're false claims, so. So that's just a note, that's kind of a nuance that we've just come across in the last few days, so. Any questions, let me know, but other than that, I'll, I'll cede the floor, in the interest of town.
Thank you, Mr. Lafon. Looks like next item is the minutes of September 24, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. Okay, discussion, I have just one short thing on page two, we're discussing the Wenham Shores Conservation Restriction, second paragraph, Q and stated the parcel's slightly over an acre, and picnic isle is a separate parcel. That's, actually, isle is spelled I-S-L-E, as in island, and the picnic and isle should be capitalized. Just a minor point, so. Can we vote on that amendment, make a motion for that amendment?
So moved. Second.
Okay. So motion and a second to improve the September 24 minutes as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Community announcements, anyone? Nothing? And this week, we were speechless, we had no select board notes, but we still have a lot of those to get to in the near future. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Yes, we've been a motion and a second, a new discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.